I will now call this meeting of the Corleville City Council to order. It is September 27, 2022. Could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Knutson.
Here.
Gross.
Quinn.
Present.
Jones.
Here.
Goodrich.
Here.
All council members except Councilmember Gross are present, as is the mayor, the city clerk, the city attorney, the city administrator, and several other staff in the audience. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Moved by Quinn, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Jones. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. All right, now I have two proclamations that I am going to read, and I will start with the proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas domestic violence, dating violence, and stalking affects women, children, and men of all racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds, causing long-term physical, psychological, and emotional harm; and whereas one in three Americans has witnessed an incident of domestic violence; and whereas children who experience domestic violence are at a high risk for failure in school, mental illness, substance abuse, suicide, and may choose violence as a way to solve problems later in life; and whereas domestic violence in rural communities exists as a hidden, silent, and often unrecognized crime that is often under-reported; and whereas through the inspiration, the courage, sorry, I'm gonna get choked up, and persistence of victims of domestic violence, their children and advocates, our communities are learning to recognize the impact of violence in the home and intimate relationships; and whereas the Domestic Violence Intervention Program, sorry, has worked to end violence in intimate relationships for 43 years through collaborative partnerships of advocates, volunteers, and local municipalities, criminal justice, health and human services, faith communities, business leaders, and private citizens; and whereas our community's achievements should be commended, and we must continue our commitment to respect and support victims of domestic violence and to prevent future violence in our community. Now therefore, I, Megan Foster, Mayor of the City of Corleville, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2022 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Corleville, and urge all citizens to work together to eliminate domestic violence, dating violence, and stalking from our community. Signed in Corleville, Iowa, this 27th day of September 2022, Megan Foster, Mayor. All right. Okay. I'm all right. I have two of my amazing colleagues here tonight to share some information with us about the work of DVIP, our Director of Community Engagement, Alta Medea, and our Development Coordinator, Christina Patramanis. Take it away, Alta.
Thank you all so much, Mayor and Council, for your support over the past year and throughout the pandemic and all of the years before. We couldn't do the work we do without the support of community members like you. It is absolutely vital to have victim survivors know that their community supports them. Of the handout that I gave you, there's lots of numbers, and I'll let you sort of look over that. I'm not gonna read it out loud to you, that's no fun, but I will highlight a couple things. The first being that, in the past year, DVIP provided 7,920 nights of safety within our emergency shelter and some of our hotel stays. We are full 365 days out of the year, and this past year has been no different. Our shelter has 40 beds, as you've heard us say many times before, and those are full. We divert or help individuals that are victim survivors find shelter elsewhere for about 350 to 400 other folks that we just simply can't accommodate within our emergency shelter here locally. Corleville specifically, I wanted to highlight that we served 270 individuals within Corleville out of the number that's in Johnson County in total, and that number is a 42% increase for Corleville alone in the past year, and that is really striking. What we have seen is that though things are sort of loosening up and victims are not isolating with their abuser any longer, we've actually seen an increased report and need for services, and then the services to those individuals have tripled in many of the cases. So as opposed to just providing safety planning, we're also providing safety planning and housing and food and other household items and emotional support and support groups and, right, you get the picture. The list continues to grow despite things sort of moving forward post-pandemic. I am happy to answer any specific questions that you all might have about the numbers or the work we're doing. We are incredibly grateful for y'all, though, but.
And then Christina, do you wanna? We wanna introduce yourself. Christina just started at DVIP. She's our newest staff member in our community engagement team.
Thank you. I'm Christina Patramanis. I just wanna say thank you so much for your support. Even the simple act of making people aware, of making people knowledgeable that domestic violence exists throughout the community helps support and saves lives in a myriad of ways, so thank you so much.
All right. Do you have any questions? Yes.
Those numbers you gave, was that the new facility?
That is our current existing facility, so the potential future is not built. So that is our existing shelter that we have been in since 1993.
Okay. And the new plan, or I guess, is to expand it. You said 40 beds?
So that project will be approximately double the size, so 70 beds with a little bit of flexibility. The way it's set up is to be a little bit more adaptable to the environment, so if there are other pandemics, if there's other types of outbreaks, if we have families that, you know, often individuals have more than one child with them, sometimes there's five kiddos, well, having five kiddos in a four-bed space, which is what we currently have, isn't possible, and so we actually would have space that then could adapt for those families to be able to actually sort of pod together in a way. But we'll have way more exciting stuff about that this spring that I can get way more detailed about. Right now, it's sort of a secret, so. It's like the loudest secret, but.
The numbers you cited for Corleville, the 42% increase, is that a year-to-date number?
So that's for our fiscal year. So our fiscal year runs July 1 to June 30, so that would be, we just wrapped those up. We process all the data that comes in from our advocates, and all of that entry usually takes a little bit of time. So those are the most current numbers for the fiscal year ending on June 30 of this
All right. Thank you so much. Let's take a photo. Okay, I promise I'm not gonna cry again. But really, I just have to end that by saying that I am so honored to work with such an amazing group of people every single day and continually am, you know, inspired by the courage and the resilience of the victim survivors we serve. This is challenging work that we do, but the support that we have throughout the community is, you know, it really helps us get through the hard stuff, so thank you to all of my colleagues. All right, on to the next proclamation. The next proclamation I have this evening is for Indigenous Peoples' Day. Whereas the city recognizes the fact that Corleville is built upon the homelands of Native American nations, to whom we owe our existence, commitment, and dedication, and without whom the building of the city would not have been possible; and whereas the area of Corleville was within the homelands of the Iowa, Mesquaky, and Sauk, and because history is complex and time goes far back beyond memory, we also acknowledge the ancient connections of many other indigenous peoples here; and whereas the City of Corleville recognizes its shared responsibility to honor our nation's indigenous roots, history, traditions, and cultural contributions; and whereas in spite of the strength shown and successes achieved, indigenous communities face systemic barriers to economic justice, health equity, educational attainment, and personal safety; and whereas the city strongly supports that Indigenous Peoples' Day shall be an opportunity to celebrate the thriving cultures and values of the indigenous peoples of the region; and whereas the city is dedicated to opposing systemic racism towards indigenous people, which perpetuates high rates of poverty and income inequality and exacerbating disproportionate health, education, and social crises; and whereas the city implores our residents to commit to understanding and addressing injustices impacting indigenous people; and whereas the city strongly encourages educational institutions, businesses, and other organizations to recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day and join the city in committing to opposing systemic racism and injustices. Now therefore, I, Megan Foster, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of Corleville, do hereby proclaim October 10, 2022, as to be Indigenous Peoples' Day in Corleville. Signed on this 27th day of September 2022, Megan Foster, Mayor. All right. Fantastic. There you go. That's for the records. Okay. On to item number five of our agenda, community comments. This is a time for community members to speak to us about items that aren't on the agenda or items that are on the agenda but are not subject to a public hearing. Each speaker will have five minutes, and we do reserve the right to adjust both the comment time and the individual speaking time based on the number of speakers or any accommodations that a speaker might need. So is there anyone that would like to speak to us this evening?
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Dennis Latem. I am the current Chair of the Citizens Community Policing Advisory Board, and I just wanted to provide our quarterly report to council. I've got a few items on things that we've done, and then I have some real brief comments I'm going to make afterwards. So things we've done since the last meeting, we had the presentation by C.R. Research of the 2021 traffic stop data, and I believe that that presentation was also given to the city council, and I do have some comments I want to make after this, so I'll be getting back to that. We had a conversation with the Iowa Civil Liberties Council. If you're not familiar with that, that's a group that was formed, we're the only chapter right now in Iowa, but it was formed after the Iowa Civil Liberties Union closed all their local chapters, so they're very interested in knowing what we do and probably will be keeping an eye on our activities to see if there's anything that might be of interest to them. We received a presentation, and I'll just say it was an excellent presentation from Chief Crone on the training that our Corleville Police Officers need to go through, and it was pretty much an eye-opener for most of us on the board, all the training that they have to do. We just recently began a review of the Corleville Police Department policies, and it's not a review in the sense that we're looking at them and trying to rewrite them, it's a review on seeing what policies are potentially available to be published for community availability so that if there's somebody in the community that wants to know, what's the policy on this? We would have it available to them through our website, or it would be on the police department's website with a link on our website to those pages. We only have identified three at this point that we thought would be helpful to have, and we're looking at another one next month, and then we will let Chief do what he needs to do to get them published for access for the public. And then also last night, we had a review with a representative from the NAACP, and she was very interested in knowing exactly what we have done since our formation, so we talked about a lot of things. We did bring up the fact that since the board was formed, we have not had any complaints that have been submitted that were claiming a biased treatment, which on face value, we should just take it that that's just an excellent endorsement of our police department. But it does concern us that at the very beginning, we added a standing agenda item for community experiences. We wanted to make sure that if people had stories that haven't been told and it did not get generated into a complaint, we wanted to hear those stories too, so we know what was really going on. At the beginning, we had a few members from the community come in, but that has totally stopped. We haven't had anybody for several months now, so we're going to try to go back to some of the people that did come in early and see, is there something going on? Is there a reason why you don't come in anymore? We wanna make sure that, well, if the perception is that the board doesn't do anything, we need to know about that so we can, you know, react to that kind of a comment. Okay, and then just a couple of comments I needed to make. The first two are just reminders. At the very beginning of the board's existence, we looked at the name of the board and had discussions about what the word "citizen" meant on that board, and there were a few of us that felt that that makes it sound like it's excluding a part of our community when we say "citizen," so we did take a vote, and it was a positive vote to ask that that word be removed from the official name. We understand that that can't happen without a change to the city ordinance, but I think it was presented a while back to the council, and we wanna make sure that it's still on your radar, that it doesn't get dropped. It can be either we can take the name off altogether and just be a Community Policing Advisory Board, or we can replace that first C, if we wanna use the same acronym with Corleville, Corleville Community and Policing Advisory Board. We wanted to make sure that that was still on the radar. We also had early on discussions about accessibility for people that physically can't attend the meeting, that they're being excluded right now because they have no way of participating in it. We talked about making the meetings available through Zoom, and I think that was brought to the board at one time, too, and the board at that time, I think, was also discussing it at first city council meetings. So we still have that as a concern, that we have a part of our community that can't attend. The only way that they know is by reading the minutes to see what happened after the fact, so we wanna also make sure that that stays on the radar. And then the last thing was a little bit of a concern we had about the presentation about the traffic stop data by C.R. Research. It was a great presentation, and I think it was very positive, but it was a lot of information that was presented very quickly, and it was hard for us to, you know, actually grasp everything that was being told. So we were looking for access to the actual data that was behind that and also to the presentation itself. There was one member of the board that wasn't there, and so that person wanted to be able to see the presentation. Just last night, or well, a couple of weeks ago, the chief has been able to get the actual presentation available, so we are able to go back and look at that, and there are some great summary comments that are made in that presentation, so we can use that. And it's our understanding that next year, we will be presenting the findings from that study to the board. You won't have the same presentation that we'll be seeing, so we wanna make sure that we have enough information to be able to accurately give you a report back next year. But we also were looking to see if we could have access to the actual data that was behind this. Last year, we reviewed the traffic stop data, which was the numbers, basically, you know, what happened where. We don't have the actual numbers behind the presentation that was given to us. If, there are a few things that did come up that we said, we would like to investigate a little bit more to see why this was happening, and we really wouldn't be able to do that without seeing the numbers, but if we're not going to be able to get access to the data, and that might be a part of the contract, you know, that they did not contract with us to give us the data, and I think that we probably should consider changing the ordinance, because the ordinance very clearly says that we have to review the traffic stop data on annual basis, so if we're not going to be able to do that, probably we should readdress that with next time that we do an ordinance update. Any questions?
Thank you so much, and we really appreciate all of your work and Chief Crone's work on the review board. Thank you so much for that update. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak to us this evening? All right. Moving on to item number six, we have a public hearing for the Clear Creek Mitigation Bank. This is for the standby letter of credit related to the Clear Creek Stream Bank, Stream Bank, sorry, Stream Bank Credit Program. Right, I will now open the public hearing on this item. Is there anyone that would like to speak to us on this? Do we have any written comments? All right. I'll now close the public hearing, and we will consider the resolution.
Resolution taking additional action to enter into one or more loan agreements and/or credit agreements in a principal amount not to exceed $4 million. Introduce or adoption by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Any questions or comments on this item?
Just a quick question. We don't, do we pay any fee for the letter of credit?
Yes, there is gonna be. Yes, there would be. Typically, the lender charges about a $500 closing fee, you know, documentation-type fee, and then there will be some legal fees in terms of the city's council, and then there will be a number of basis points or point.
So there'll be a percentage of the size of the letter of credit?
Percentage, sort of like a, it's not an interest rate, but it's a standby fee for the exposure the bank has if it was ever drawn upon. Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? All right. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Quinn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes with Gross absent. Item number seven, Colony Fenn Erosion and Dewatering Correction Project. This is a public hearing for the project that would correct gullies and erosion that would stop dewatering and provide a plan for restoring native vegetation for the fens located on the former colony property. Bids for this project are due on October 18, 2022. I will now open the public hearing, and I believe we have someone that would like to speak to us on this item. We have Amy Foster, our Stormwater Manager, coming up to the mic.
I'm Amy Foster, the Stormwater Coordinator for the City of Corleville. The project that we're discussing tonight is the Colony Fenn Erosion and Dewatering Control Project. This project was funded through federal dollars provided in the American Rescue Plan. These dollars were delegated to state governments and funded through the Iowa Water Infrastructure Fund. At this time, I'm going to introduce our design engineer, Erin Gwenepp. Erin is with Emmons and Oliver Resources, and he's gonna talk a little bit more about
Thank you very much, Amy. We have just a couple slides here for you to walk you through the project a little bit, fairly informal, but this is the, one of the colony fens. This is in the Westland East area, in the area set aside to be a nature preserve park. I'm not sure if there's an official name, but nonetheless, the orange square here highlights the general location. And just a quick background on what this is exactly, there are some unique natural areas in the Westland East area that we have been studying and monitoring for a little while. They are known as a fenn-type wetland, and there's a few of them, north and south, but they're kind of in trouble. There's a stream just to the west of these, and we have some gullies that are eroding up into the watershed right next to these fenn features, and believe it or not, this is basically what they look like. Maybe not visually stunning, but they are actually a kind of a diverse and unique ecological landscape, and it's good to keep in mind they're currently degraded. We have conducted some ecological monitoring and produced a Natural Resources Management Plan for this area to try and spruce it up and revive it, so to speak, and bring it back in preparation for being used as a future green space. So there are, let's see, I'm gonna, nah, that's right. In essence, the project is just filling some big gullies, plugging a leak, so to speak, because these are wetlands, and the gullies are currently draining them artificially, and so that's why they're a little bit degraded. And we will use soil from very near this site that we will harvest from some adjacent stream banks that are currently eroding and failing as well, so it's kind of a two-for-one. Stabilize the stream banks, fill the gullies, and improve it for the future. You can see here in this map, the larger north and south fens, the green and white hatched areas are approximately 2005 delineations of what these look like, and the yellow striped areas are from last year. So you can see they've reduced in size quite a bit. The north one particularly has lost over 50% of its area already, just from being dried out. And here's a little bit closer view, and you can see some of the area vegetation as well. Some of those trees that are in the low land are not actually supposed to be there. It's supposed to be more of a prairie and wetland, sort of an eco-type. And this is the very top end of one of the gullies with a backpack there for scale, but they're actually fairly large. Over 3,500 cubic yards of soil is gonna be required to fill these things. One of them's over 45 feet wide, and the north one extends over about 1,000 feet. So this is a pretty large hole in the ground that has formed, and that one formed all at the outlet of one single four-inch drainage tile over the last couple decades. We are going to install a new access as well to get to these. They're a little bit tough to get to currently, but there's a kind of a muddy cattle crossing there right now that is also leading to some sedimentation in the stream. We're gonna remove this failing concrete crossing and put in a newer, more modern aggregate crossing that's stabilized so that cattle can cross the stream without getting it all mucky and muddy. And this is a photograph of one of the very large and steep failing stream banks where we're gonna lay the bank back and collect some soil there to fill the gullies so that we don't have to bring off-site soil in and risk bringing in any other kind of invasive species or anything like that. And that is about it. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Erin. Can you please tell us and the general public what is a fenn?
Yes, sort of. I'm a water resources engineer. We have some very skilled ecologists that could tell you a lot more details than I could. Essentially, it is a wetland perched on the side of a hill. Normally, we think of wetlands as being at the very bottom of a hill in a slump. These fens tend to be side-hill seeps where water pops out the side of a hill due to soil layers and whatnot, and they tend to be fairly unique settings, not just because they're on the side of a hill, but they have specific soil types, alkalinity in the soil, they grow fairly specific vegetation, and they attract certain kinds of wildlife and whatnot. So that's kind of what makes them sort of unique, not only topographically but ecologically as well. And these are sort of the, the centerpiece of this larger green space. Point of preserving it is that when we did these ecological assessments, several of the wetlands in that region, uh, were graded on a scale, some of them were actually scored as excellent, uh, being in very good condition, uh, remnant wetlands, and some of them were fair to middling and degraded, uh, and these two in particular were fairly heavily degraded. Uh, so we want to get them back up into good shape like some of the ones that were scored as excellent for future use for a park.
Uh, looking at the, the slide that you provide, there are two fens, correct, originally, but with the dryer and everything, we have four, smaller one now.
That is correct, yeah, it's starting to divide up into, into patchworks, yep. Uh, and there may have been, uh, more historically. Um, the only, uh, viable historical record that we have is that previous delineation from 2005. Um, it's an area that's pastured currently, uh, and so there may be other impacts, but that's, that's all we have to go on.
So why would the general public get excited about these fen being restored back? Like, when it's all done, what, what do we get to see?
Mm-hmm. So the long-term goal is, uh, as this area is restored to a, a green space, um, and, you know, uh, I, I'm, to be honest, I'm not sure of the full long-term plan, but let's say it's a park, green space, nature area, uh, with these in a restored condition, they are going to attract and sustain, uh, more diverse wildlife, uh, birds and things like that. Um, they did a little bit of biological assessment while they were conducting this, uh, study as well, and, uh, the diversity of, uh, birds and other wildlife is also fairly high in this area, so, um, should be only higher when we bring it back.
And you said cattle is grading on it right now? Will they continue to grade, and why the upgrade is taking place, and then continue to grade after it's done?
Yeah, uh, as I understand, for a little while, um, believe it or not, even though the cattle have, um, potentially a, a little bit of a degrading effect, and that they can walk in it and mess it up, they actually keep some invasive species back as well, so, uh, taking the grazing herbivores off too early before you're ready to manage it more manually can actually be, um, kind of a problem. That said, um, we have a plan to install some temporary electric fencing around the fen-specific areas, uh, when the project is done, to keep the cattle out of those specific areas, so they can't, uh, get in there with their hooves and, and mess it up too much. But keeping them on the perimeter of the project is actually a good thing, it can kind of help preserve it.
So when it's open to the public, um, will cattle be a problem if people come and visit?
They're friendly cattle.
Okay, that's good to know.
We've, we've walked through them many times, they, they're, they're quite nice.
Just don't walk behind them.
I think, I think when this is, we have a lot of, of, uh, information that we still are working through, we're, we're working through some, um, agricultural grazing practices that will help us maintain, we have over 60 acres here to maintain, and so we are looking at, can we continue to use cattle, and how do we fence, and how do we place, and, and, and have those cattle coexist with people being able to get out there and walk the land and, and see some different things? But I, you know, we definitely, um, Amy Foster has had some wonderful resources, and we're learning a lot about what we can do out there right now. Um, the electric fences have already been in place this summer, and keeping those cattle, um, out of the places we don't want them, but like Erin said, probably these fens are as, are, um, even as nice as they are because we have, they have been grazed for the last almost 20 years, um, that, that, uh, they haven't been, they've been out there.
Indeed, a lot of these, a lot of these ecosystems were actually pruned fairly well by historical grazers, deer, elk, things like that, and so the cattle kind of replaced that a little bit.
Yeah, it's kind of, will go into master planning phase. Um, we're, uh, probably, we're waiting into the spring probably because, um, we're really hoping we get our REAP grant that I talked about in August, um, that will allow us to do a timber stand improvement and allow a lot better access to really get out there and see, the land is beautiful, but you have to use your imagination right now, because it is so thick with understory and, and burrs and thorns and everything, uh, that wants to just grab at you. So we want to be able to, to take people out there while we're doing that master planning and really, um, look at this area from, like, like Erin said, this, the ecological reports are so wonderful, we want to make sure we showcase that as we, um, plan for the future.
Thank you. All right, anyone else like to, uh, speak to us about this item?
I have one more question, so it sounds like the tile might have been the root cause of the problem here, I assume that's being removed then, or, or what?
It is, yes. Um, certainly the one at the very top of this gully, um, will be deactivated, um, dig it up in sections and plug it, uh, and we will look for others while we're out there, um, to see if there's any others that might be causing the problem. Um, it, it's a combination, that the tile creates a, a pinpoint outfall of water that, uh, can start erosion, um, you know, local soils are a little bit fragile as well, and so that's part of it. Um, there's many factors, uh, of course, but, um, that, sometimes that, that pinpoint outfall from the tile can be kind of the, the, the fuse that starts it all, if you will.
Anything else? All right, I will now close the public hearing, and we will consider the resolution.
Resolution approving the plan specifications, estimate of cost and form of contract, ordering bids, setting a date for the receiving of bids, and directing posting of the bid letting, all for the Colony Fenn Erosion and Dewatering Correction Project. Resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Winn, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any final questions or comments about this item? All right, could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Winn.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all eyes with gross absent. Item number eight, this is a parcel south of Oakdale Boulevard and west of Jones Boulevard. This is a public hearing that would change the land use map for a 25.64 acre property located in the Westland use area to medium residential, medium residential use in order to allow a residential town home development between six and 16 dwelling units. We will start this agenda item with a report from our Community Development Director, Dave Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council members. Uh, this property is also located in the Westland use area, and the Corleville Community Plan identifies this, uh, area as being a key, uh, growth area for, uh, not only Corleville, but the region. Staff has found that this amendment will address growing residential demands, uh, in our community, and the area will also add to the mixture of housing types, uh, in the community. Uh, this request can be considered consistent with the trend of development, as well as the community plan's goals to create neighborhoods that are responsive to the needs of a variety of residents, um, and also, uh, provide access to services, commerce, as well as recreation. This, uh, this amendment will preserve, uh, mixed use, uh, at the corner of Oakdale and Jones Boulevard, uh, so that will still be a prominent, uh, feature there. Um, so we will have a, a commercial presence still at that corner, uh, with this amendment. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this request at their September 7th meeting, and by a vote of six to zero, the commission recommended to approve the land use map amendment from mixed use and corporate camp, uh, cor, corporate campus to medium density residential. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, I will now open the public hearing on this item. Is there anyone that would like to speak to us about this?
Good evening, John Marner with MMS Consultants, representing the applicant. I don't have a lot to add, I think they've covered everything, uh, very well. It's a great location to have medium density with the nearby Clerk Creek Amana School that's proposed to go in just across, just to the west. As Dave mentioned, we did leave room for the mixed use to provide that commercial presence along Oakdale, and then also south a little ways along Jones Avenue, or Jones Boulevard, so I'm available for any of the questions if you have any.
Can we see the map?
Yeah, can you pull it up very easily?
Even the, the big Westland use map, just.
Do you want the, do you want the exhibit?
I don't know what that is.
The exhibit's probably the better explanation.
It's not critical, David. You're usually so good at finding these.
It's in our packet too, correct?
It's in the packet.
It's in the packet, yeah.
I don't know why I can't locate it right now.
Mike, are you wondering about the, where this is?
Yeah.
Like, just wanting to?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can't really tell where it's at in this packet very easily.
Yeah, so what are some landmarks that are around it, that would kind of help orient?
This is, this is really at the, um, southwest corner of Oakdale and Jones Boulevard, this is, um.
After we extend Oakdale.
Right.
South of that.
Okay. Okay. And I'll just pull it up on the Johnson County map for you really quick, and give you an idea of those boundaries. So it includes, uh, this property here, highlighted in blue, this property, and extends to the western portion of this property here. So this is directly north of, or directly east of, uh, the new school site, and north of, uh, all the work that's being done on Coral Crossing, uh, as well as Ridgeview Edition.
Yeah, that seems perfect for residential.
It'll be a nice continuation of, of those efforts.
Yeah.
So this property's immediately adjacent to the school property?
I mean, the western edge of this property will?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions?
And right now, the residential, it's just mostly town home, that plan for that?
Correct, um, six to 16 dwelling units per acre and town home development.
All right. If we don't have any other questions, I'll now close the public hearing, and we will consider the ordinance.
Ordinance number 2022-1012, an ordinance amending the Corleville Community Plan to reflect certain property generally known as a 25.64 acre parcel south of Oakdale Boulevard and west of Jones Boulevard in the Westland used area. Corleville, Iowa, to be designated medium density residential use in place of mixed use and corporate campus use. Introduced for adoption, first consideration by Councilmember Jones, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Knutson. Any other questions or comments on this item? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Winn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Ordinance passes its first consideration, all eyes with gross absent. Item number nine, this is the third reading of an ordinance that would change the land use in the, for the, uh, would change the land use map to a, for a 30 acre property located in the Westland used area to public and semi-public use in order to allow the development of an elementary school for the Clear Creek Amana School District. Could I have the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 2022-1011, an ordinance amending the Corleville Community Plan to reflect certain property generally known as Auditor's Parcel Number 0626401003. Corleville, Iowa, to be designated public semi-public use in place of corporate campus use, low-density residential use, medium-density residential use, and open space use. Introduced for adoption on third and final consideration by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Winn. Any final questions or comments on this item? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Knutson.
Aye.
Winn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Ordinance passes its third and final consideration, all eyes with gross absent. Item number 10, Engineering Services Agreements. We have two parts to this agenda item. The first part is an agreement for engineering services required to abandon the Kempf Lift Station and 3,000 feet of force main. These utilities serve the Kempf subdivision and a dozen residential properties along 12th Avenue, which will be switched to a direct gravity sewer connecting to North Liberty's trunk sewer, 650 feet to the north, as agreed to with the 2080 agreement swapping sewer flows in future growth areas between Corleville and North Liberty. This agreement is not to exceed $30,000. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution approving an engineering services agreement with Vistran Kim, Inc., for the temp lift station abandonment. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Jones. Questions or comments on this item? All right, could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Winn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all eyes with gross absent. Item B, this agreement is for engineering services required to construct a new force main from Brown Deer Number Four Lift Station West along Oakdale Boulevard through the 12th Avenue intersection to Oakdale Road, then to the west end on Oakdale Road connection to the existing gravity trunk sewer. This agreement is not to exceed $255,000. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution approving an engineering services agreement with Vistran Kim, Inc., for the Oakdale Boulevard Force Main Improvements. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Winn, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Questions or discussion on this item?
I have a general question, not about these resolutions, but it sounds like, being a novice in sewer things, this sounds like a major project here, so that, so I guess I'm just curious how big your project is, and then secondly, what, what effect does it have on the, on the homeowners in this area?
Yes, this is a major project. So what this will do is it will replace the existing force main that was installed way back, I think it was 1992, as part of the original, uh, north end annexation project that extended water and sanitary sewer to, at the time, far north Corleville. And, um, however, over time, as, uh, the area, um, Lakewood Hills, uh, Timber Edition, Oak Grove, some other subdivisions, uh, north of Oakdale Boulevard developed, the force main that was originally built, um, now basically kind of runs through a wooded area, some backyards, side yards, it's just not where, um, we want it, and we've had some breaks which have been, uh, problematic, um, over the years, so what we are doing with this project is relocating that force main. And again, it starts at the Brown Deer Number Four Lift Station, which is at the, um, bottom of Brown Deer Road Hill, just north of the Brown Deer Maintenance Building. And so from there, we're going to reroute the force main up to Oakdale Boulevard, and then stay along Oakdale Boulevard through 12th Avenue to the first intersection of Oakdale Road, and then it follows Oakdale Road over towards what used to be the, kind of the old east entrance into the, um, UI Research Park, and eventually makes its way to a gravity sanitary sewer connection just south of the Crandic Railroad, uh, near that, uh, university parking lot that's in the far east side of the campus, so, um, it'll put it in a, a place that's easier to maintain and, uh, repair if, if that ever happens again, but, um, it is a major project, for sure.
There are, answering your question, Keith, too, that there are several homes along the Highland Park and, um, Brown Deer roads there that have had their yards dug up numerous times, their backyards, because of breaks, and so there are quite a few houses along there that will be excited, I would assume, to have this happen, because, um, they will have a lot less disruption.
It is a, I believe, a 12-inch diameter force main, so it's, it's a large pipe, and some portions of it will be directionally drilled, and other portions will be open, open trench installation.
Why doesn't this go out for bid?
The project will, this is just the engineering.
Yes. Yeah, this.
Yeah, the project will.
So we don't have to put $250,000 contracts out for bid?
No, because you're doing, um, uh, based on qualifications for the engineering services, but the, um, work for the actual bids will have to be.
Okay. Yes, that's correct.
So the, what are we expecting to, the bids to come in, or that's what we're gonna find out?
Yeah, that'll be part of that whole process, is be a bid, bid estimate, but. But I think we have budgeted, Scott?
The engineer's construction estimate is, is just over one point five million.
Okay.
So that will continue to evolve a little bit as we get into the actual design, so.
But this has been on our capital improvements plan for several years.
Yeah, we've been talking about it.
And the other component of that is ultimately upgrading or replacing the lift station itself. But this is just the force main part of that.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Could we have the resolution, please? Did we read it already? Sorry.
Thank you.
I've done that before. Okay. Could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember, Quinn?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all eyes with gross absent. Item number eleven, Iowa River Trail Hawkins Drive to Clear Creek. This project constructed a trail along the Iowa River from Rocky Shore Hawkins Drive to Clear Creek. And we have two items here. I would entertain a motion to approve the pay estimate eleven, final to Peterson Contractors Incorporated for the Iowa River Trail Hawkins Drive to Clear Creek for thirty thousand dollars.
So moved.
Moved by Quinn, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Jones. We do a roll call or?
No, votes, votes.
All in favor?
Can I, can I ask a question first?
Sure, you bet.
So is it our responsibility to pay for that trail all the way up to Rocky Shore? Even though it's partly in Iowa City, but that was the agreement that we'd do it, okay?
Great. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion is approved, all eyes with gross absent. Item B. Could I have that resolution, please?
Resolution accepting the Iowa River Trail Hawkins Drive to Clear Creek as completed. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Jones, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Questions or comments on this item?
Just kind of just the grass around there that we were waiting for that it seemed like we had to have a certain density of grass along there or something?
That, that's not what has taken.
This project's been done for like a year. We're finally paying for it.
It actually, it had to go through the Iowa DOT audit process.
Okay.
And so there was a long list of documentation that had to be processed, received from the contractor, processed through our consultant, sent to the DOT, and then they go through their audit. And that results in a lot of back and forth. And so we finally got to the point where we could close it out.
Very good. Just had a very nice compliment on that trail and the bridge going over Clear Creek by my citizen this weekend. It's very nice.
Awesome.
Was on it this morning.
Any other questions on this item? Could I get the roll call, please?
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Quinn?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all eyes with gross absent. Item number twelve, Corleville Town Center Parking Structure Repairs 2021. This project repaired concrete, provided supplemental slab reinforcement, installed traffic topping, and restored traffic markings for the Town Center Parking Ramp. The thirty-six thousand eight hundred and forty-three dollars and forty-seven cents retainage minus the two thousand six hundred and fifty-four dollars and eighty cents from the final pay estimate leaves a total of thirty-four thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and sixty-seven cents. Could I have a motion to approve the pay estimate number three, final, to Western Specialty Contractors for the Corleville Town Center Parking Structure Repairs?
So moved.
Moved by Jones, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. All in favor?
Can I ask a question on this one, too?
Yes, you may.
So they were, they had to come back and do some repairs to that?
Yes.
Was that at their expense?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yep, they, yes.
Yeah. Okay, all right.
This will be the last of it?
It's the hope for this project, hopefully.
Any other questions before we vote? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved, all eyes with gross absent. Item B, consider a resolution accepting the Corleville Town Center Parking Structure. Could I have that resolution, please?
Resolution accepting the Corleville Town Center Parking Structure Repairs 2021 as completed. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Questions or comments on this item? All right, roll call, please.
Customer, Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Quinn?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all eyes with gross absent. Item thirteen, Wellmark Blue Cross and Blue Shield. The city has received a quote for a four point one-three percent increase to its current premiums for the calendar year twenty twenty-three. And we have Mike Funky here to share some information about that.
Thank you, Mayor. We had really good news with this Wellmark increase. If a hundred thousand dollars is, is good news, well, this is good news. Especially compared to last year, the four point one-three percent increase will be about a hundred and ten thousand dollars more onto our calendar year premium than what we're currently experiencing. But that's compared to three hundred and forty-five thousand extra last year. So, which was a fourteen percent increase. So this is much more in line with what we've always experienced. And Wellmark's book of business is about eight percent, so our four point one-three is excellent. So we recommend approval.
Great, thank you for that overview. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution approving the quotation of Wellmark Blue Cross and Blue Shield to provide health insurance coverage for the city employees. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. So why the decrease?
Well, it's more aligned by this than what we're used to over the past years. I think seven percent was about as high as we got in the last five years. Our insurance is a very solid plan, so I think our employees, they're not afraid to use it. So it's kind of, you know, they use it more, so it's cheaper in return because they're taking care of things upfront rather than waiting for the catastrophic, you know, situation. So I think that's most of it. Our pharmacy charges, they're right along the line. Even though there's no incentive to use generic versus name brand, our employees are meeting the generic book of business again, if you want to call it that, that Wellmark experiences amongst all their customers who have different level plans of pharmacy. So employees are making good choices, good decisions, and they're using it, which is, which is good.
It speaks to the importance of having good healthcare and good benefits. I mean, it is, it does lead to cost savings in the long run when you provide, when you provide quality services and, and yeah. It, it's, it's better to be preventative than?
And I think that's, that's all part of it.
So this is a calendar year change.
Yes.
What did we budget in terms of our fiscal year for an increase?
When we do these, the, the budget, we do, because we pay a month ahead of time. We do five months at the current rates we know, then seven months at a guesstimate. And I believe what we did this time was ten percent for those seven months. So that should fall well within it. Typically, we were, been in the seven percent budget range. But since we had that fourteen point two percent, and some of those were expected to be continuing claims, we went up to ten percent, I believe, this time, so.
So we're well under our?
Yep, yep.
Just a reminder, excuse me, what is, what is the cost to our employees per month?
The cost of, per month to have a family plan is thirty-five dollars per month. And the single plan is, is no cost. We pick up the full cost of that.
That is amazing.
It is.
That is really, really amazing. That's almost unheard of. Wow. Cool. Any other questions?
Thank you for your work, I guess.
The employees are staying healthy, that's the good part.
Yeah, exactly. All right. Could I get the roll call, please?
Customer, Knutson?
Aye.
Quinn?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all eyes with gross absent. Item number fourteen, professional services agreement. This is a resolution for an agreement with Lynch Dallas, P.C. They have provided professional services for union and contract administration since 2014, under terms of a previous agreement with Ray and Associates. This agreement will go up from eleven thousand five hundred dollars to fifteen thousand dollars during negotiation years and will be a thousand dollars less per unit with active multi-year agreements during non-negotiation years. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution approving a professional services agreement with Lynch Dallas, P.C. for union negotiation and contract administration services. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Quinn, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. So is this for all of our union employees or is this for our, our police?
It's for all three. It's representing the city when we go to negotiations with those unions.
Okay.
So they represent us. And when Ray and Associates was doing it for years before I was here, and I was here in ninety-three doing this, so there before that, I think it's only had a one rate change in all that time. So this would be the second one.
Had that big of an increase either.
And it's very small, especially if we get a multi-year contract like we have with Public Works and Transit right now. They'll each be only three thousand dollars instead of four thousand.
Yeah.
And if we can get police to a multi-year, now you're talking about a five hundred dollar increase. So we just wanted to get it more in line, you know, just get something on the books and have Lynch Dallas's name instead of them honoring an old one for the last eight years, which we appreciate them doing and look forward to a continued working relationship with them.
So this is when, so the, all of the union stewards then would meet with Lynch, representative from Lynch Dallas, and then you, is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so I, I and a representative from Lynch Dallas sit on the city's side of the table. And then the union stewards and their union representative, whether it be ASME or the Corleville Police Officers Association, that's a fraternal order of police officers, I think is what it is, the FOP. You know, so we go back and forth, but they make sure the contracts are legal and we're meeting all the deadlines and understanding what the trends are around the state and around the country so that we have a better understanding of how negotiations should go and where we'll let them. But, and it's good to have a continuing nature relationship with them so you can always know where you've been in the past in negotiations, what was important, and how we got to where we are today.
And they're connected with the Iowa League of Cities, or they're in some sort of, or they, they, I believe, have, they're in some sort of community alliance that has to do with the Iowa League of Cities, so they do a good job of keeping track of the different legislation and, and kind of understanding the landscape from a labor relations perspective.
Correct.
Any other questions or comments on this item? Could I get the roll call, please?
Councilmember, Quinn?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Resolution is approved, all eyes with gross absent.
Item fifteen, easement agreements. This agreement will grant Mid-American Energy Company two easements for electronic switch gears on city property to facilitate work on the Fifth Street Improvement Projects. Could I get the resolution?
Resolution approving easement agreements with Mid-American Energy Company for the Fifth Street Improvements Project, 12th Avenue to 20th Avenue. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Jones, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Knutson. Questions or comments on this item? Roll call, please.
Customer, Jones?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Quinn?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all eyes with gross absent. Item sixteen, Governor's Traffic Safety Contract. The FY 2023 Highway Safety Grant is for fifteen thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars to cover two hundred and fifty overtime hours of high-visibility traffic enforcement, two targeted traffic enforcement projects, two occupant protection surveys, program training and related travel, and one DPS-approved preliminary breath tester. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution approving an agreement with the Governor's Traffic Safety Bureau for Traffic Services. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Jones. Questions or comments? All right, roll call.
Customer, Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Quinn?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all eyes with gross absent. Item seventeen, Federal Recreational Trails Program. This is a grant application for a trailhead at a future Clear Creek Point Park for both bicycle and kayak activities. The city share of this eighty-twenty grant will be thirty-one thousand eighty dollars. And we have Parks and Rec Director Sherry Proud here to tell us a little bit about this program.
Yes, normally, we apply for this program, the Federal Recreational Trails Program, for concrete itself to put down trail. But this program also does amenities, so we are seeking a total grant of the one twenty-four, I'm looking for my number here, three twenty for up, and the total cost of the project is one fifty-five, four hundred. And that would build the tra, if you remember from the Clear Creek Point Park design that we looked at in August and is out for the Destination Iowa Grant, the shelter, the concrete pad, bike fix-it station, picnic tables, benches, and the kayak vending machine. For lack of a better term, it's, it's just kind of a fun thing. But that would be up near, it was up closer to First Avenue, near the tree plantings that we did in 2020, right off of where the Hawkeye Ready Mix Plant sat, more of the building. So even if we would not get the Destination Iowa Grant and we would get the Federal Rec Trails Grant, we would still be able to do this project as a standalone. So we're working really hard to make sure that happens. I think I hit everything that would be included in this. It would not include the restrooms. Those are back a little bit farther into the park in that Destination Iowa Grant. So we would have some temporary restrooms if we needed to have them.
Okay, thank you very much for that overview. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution approving a grant application for federal monies available via the Iowa Department of Transportation Federal Recreation Trails Fund Program in connection with constructing a trailhead at future Clear Creek Point Park. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any other questions or discussion on this item?
I missed the discussion of the vending machines for kayaks.
So I have not seen these in person yet, but they, basically, you're able to, like the bike share programs, you're able to insert a credit card, access a kayak, access a life jacket, be able to use that kayak. And then what, what I need to still answer or, or have answered is, do they leave those kayaks in a certain place and we have to have staff get them back? Or if the person's responsible for checking those back in?
That was my question. You know, it's usually probably not a problem, but if it's, if they go downstream, will they be able to get back upstream if they have to return them to the same site? And, you know, if there's a place, drop-off in City Park or something, obviously, there's another dam not too far downstream, but if they have a drop-off downstream, that might make it more attractive.
Yeah. I think it's all in, in your flow, how, how fast that water's flowing. And this would be right at the point where you can go up Clear Creek.
Right.
And so I've paddled both ways on Clear Creek, hundred, a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty CFs and been able to do that.
Yeah. But you're an experienced kayaker, this?
Oh, I wouldn't call you that.
Okay, any other questions? All right, can we get the roll call?
Customer, Quinn?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Resolution is approved, all eyes with gross absent. Item eighteen, I would consider a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to consider a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented, A through S.
Moved by Goodrich, seconded by?
Second, but before you vote, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Items, this is for you, Tony. Items P and Q appear to be library expenses. And I'm wondering why they show up on the consent calendar and just not in the library budget? And I'm wondering why they show up on the consent calendar and just not in the library budget?
So your question is why they're on the consent calendar?
Yeah, usually, we don't see library expenses on the consent calendar.
That is a very good question. I would need to do a little research to find out the answer to that.
So it is a little unusual that they'd be there, yeah, okay.
Yep. My, my suspicion is that they are outside of typical line item, but I can check.
Okay. Oh, okay, okay.
Good question.
That's a good answer. Thank you.
Okay, could I get the roll call, please?
Customer Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Consent calendar is approved, all ayes with gross absent. Item number 19, City Administrators Report.
Yep, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things coming up, the residents can clean up around their house or yard. This coming week is Mayor's Cleanup Week from the 3rd through the 7th on the normal trash collection day. And then on October 8th will be the Community Shred Day, and that's here in the parking lot of the Aquatic Center. So those are two good things to remind folks of. And then we will also be hosting on October 14th our Corville Community Cleanup. And this is an opportunity where we'll be doing work all around the community, planting plants and trees, and cleaning up areas, picking up trash, and just encourage people, residents of the community, if they're interested, we would love to have them participate. And that will be from 8:30 to noon with a lunch to follow. So just let City Hall know, and we'll get them, their name to the right person, so that's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Mayor's Report, I have a few things. I would also like to mention the Fire Department Open House. That will be, I'm sorry, I forgot the date. What's the date of that?
October 16th, I believe.
Okay, great, thank you.
Let me, I'll look it up here.
Yes, I forgot to write.
Yes, it is the 16th.
Great, I forgot to write down the date, but I did write down the time. The time is from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m., and is that at the main fire station?
Yeah, it's at the main fire station, and they will be doing both the open house and fire prevention and their soup supper at the same time. So instead of in the earlier in the afternoon, they have given you an opportunity to do both at the same time.
That's awesome. I love the, I love the, that event. It's, it's a lot of fun. I also wanted to mention a couple of events that are coming up for DVIP. For, we have a lot of events happening for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. You can view our full schedule of events on our website at dvipiowa.org at our, on our events page. But two that are coming up very shortly, on Saturday, October 1st, we are hosting our Kickoff at Kinnick concession sales event. It's a fun way to kick off domestic, the official start of Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We will be at Stand 16 at Kinnick Stadium, and we will receive 10% of the sales from our stand, and we will receive 100% of the tips. So if you are, I know it's going to be a big game. So if you are at that game, if you are fortunate enough to be at that game, please stop by our stand. And it's a great way to have an impact on victim survivors in our community. Also, on October 15th, we have our Shop for Shelter event. This is our largest in-kind donation drive of the year. We receive nine months' worth of in-kind donations through that event. And those are donations that provide life-saving resources for individuals who are staying in our emergency shelter. That will run from 9:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. And how it works, if you've never done it before, is that you stop by any of the Hy-Vee locations. All of the Hy-Vee's in Johnson County will be participating, and the Fairway Stores as well. You stop by, you'll see our wonderful DVIP staff and volunteers greeting you at the doors with a shopping list that has our top-needed items on the list. And so as you're shopping, you can just pick up a couple of extra things and put it in our cart, and it'll help the individuals who are staying in our shelter. So that's a really, really great way to help out, really easy thing to do as you're doing your grocery, grocery shopping. And I do want to just say that last year, when we had this event, the Corleville, the Lantern Park Corleville was the, the top-producing store. So we, at the, the Corleville location on, in Lantern Park, sold the, the highest number of full carts throughout Johnson County. So I'd love to see that happen again this year. And then finally, I just wanted to say that I'm very excited to be attending the League of Cities Conference this week with some city staff, and council member Goodrich and Quinn will be in Waterloo, and it'll be a lot of fun. It's always a wonderful opportunity to connect and network with elected officials around the state, and I always learn so much whenever, whenever I attend that event. And that is all I have.
Madam Mayor, could I ask, if maybe you don't know, but assuming I can fight my way through the crowd, where's Stand 16 at?
I think it's at the, I think, we were just talking about this, actually. Like, we were looking at a map, trying to figure out where it is. And I think it's at, it's at one of the end zones. I think it might be at like the, the northeast?
In the Pasha area.
Yes, yes, yes.
All right.
But we would certainly appreciate that. I know the game is, is, it's going to be a big one, and we were, we were pretty, I was, we were pretty happy that we got that date.
That's great.
It's going to be a big game. Okay, City Attorney's Report.
I have nothing.
I've got nothing.
Okay. Committee and Council Members Report, we'll start with council member Goodrich.
The Family Field House is having Family Field House games. What a great way, if you haven't been to the Green State Family Field House in the IRL, you can go, $3 per person or $10 a family. And it's this Sunday, October 2nd, from, it's in the afternoon. I don't have the time here, but you can go on the website and see they're going to do pickleball, kickball, wiffle ball, inflatable bowling, dodgeball, and big pong. So there's something for everyone and a great time to visit the Green State Family Field House. Also, at the arena, there will be a preseason hockey game on October 6th. And Iowa volleyball is going on, their season has started. And then the opening weekend for the Heartlanders is October 21st and 22nd. So a lot going on at the arena, and just encourage you to buy your tickets now. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Council member Jones.
A couple of things, Madam Mayor. First of all, I had a great experience last night. I attended my second Parks and Rec Commission meeting, and it was the last walking tour of the year. And we were at the Clear Creek Trail Extension, the, the single-track trail, where we were when we took the city tour, but we spent a little more time and went a little bit farther to the west, which is now complete, and it's an absolute beautiful area. Alex Bumire and Kyle Mollis and Sean DeGood were our hosts. And so it's, it's really a great, a great area. One of the things that was really impressive to me is there are three boardwalks out there going over low areas. And those boardwalks, well, first of all, the trail was, a lot of the trail was built with dirt that came from the Corville Food Pantry site, so that dirt was repurposed out there. The old Shields sign, if you remember, that used to be out there that faced the interstate, hasn't been used in a number of years, the, the pillars that supported that sign actually were repurposed and support these boardwalks. And then the boardwalk slats themselves are actually boards that were milled from trees down during the Durachio in that area and other areas in Corville. So it's, it's, it's absolutely fantastic. And if, and if you want to get a better view, this is the weekend to do it. The Iowa Mountain Bike Festival will be Sunday, October 2nd, from 11:00 to 4:00, hosted by the Iowa City Bicycle Coalition and the Corville Parks and Rec Department. There'll be vendors supporting bike adventures, riders leading single-track and flow-trail rides, concession stands, music and yard games, and riders of all ages and abilities are welcome to come. So it's really a neat area out there. The second thing I wanted to mention, I mentioned this at the last council meeting, but now it's, it's imminent. On tomorrow, the Iowa City Book Festival kicks off and runs through October 13th. And one of the parts of that, Corville has a big part, and that's the Paul Engel Prize, and that'll be awarded Thursday night at the Corville Library. The doors of the library open at 6:30, and the program starts at 7:00. This, the prize honors a writer who, like Paul Engel, represents a pioneering spirit in the world of literature. And this year's winner is Rebecca Solnit. I know some of you know her works. She's an award-winning writer, historian, and activist, and she's written more than 20 books on feminism, environmental, and urban history, popular power, social change, and insurrection, wandering and walking, and hope and despair. So again, I just, it's open to the public, invite anybody to come. She'll give a, there'll be a question and answer session with her, an interview session with her. She may do a reading from one of her works. And then there's a reception after that, sponsored by the Corville Library Foundation. So be refreshments after, so invite any of the public to come to that who are interested. It would be a nice event.
Awesome, thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Council member Quinn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a few things tonight. First, the community ambassador program is taking application right now. We have had a slew of interview to select, you know, ambassador for the program, and we are looking for more community member who live in pockets in our city that might not know about the resource and information that being put out within our, our community. So we encourage you to apply. You can go on the Corville Public Li- Corville Public Library website, or you can email Sabdaala@corville.org, or give a call to 319-248-1850 and inquire about the program. So yes, please apply. And just this past Sunday, there are, there was two fundraiser, that was really successful fundraiser, that support the work, not only in our community here in Corville, but also throughout Johnson County. The first is Houses Into Home Comfort Food Cook-Off fundraiser. I know that council member Knutson participated in that, and Mayor also participated in that. I also did, and they have over 200 community members showed up and support the, the, you know, the, the event. So it was wildly successful, and thanks to all of the sponsor, people who volunteer, donated time, their effort, you know, resources to make this a successful event. And the other one is the annual Bike Library fundraiser farm cycle. And that had been going on for a decade now. And what they do is they, they not only showcase the, the trail and the way to bike from farm to farm, but they also highlight all the local farm and the local talented chef in our community who actually utilize the fresh produce at the farm, cook up a storm of food, and all of the biker who participate get to go there and enjoy the food and enjoy the community. It was a wonderful event. Our family participate in it every year, even my little, nine-years-old. He biked for 18 miles and ate his way throughout the farm. It was really fun. So again, thank you to everybody who made that possible. And next year, I would encourage everybody to participate. It's really fun, and they have over 300 people participate. Mobile Clinic will be at the Corville Public Library this Saturday, October 1st, from 11:30 to 2:30. They might have COVID and flu shot, but that have not been solidified yet. So please check out the, the Corville Public Library website, or give them a call to make sure if you are seeking that service before showing up. Free produce stand will be at the Corville Food Pantry parking lot on Friday, October 7th, from 4:00 to 5:30 p.m. And this is one of the, one that, next to the last one that will be, happen for this growth season. And around this time of year, they have lots of melons and corn, and there's still peppers and tomatoes and cucumbers. So showed up, everybody and anybody can come and take some fresh local produce home. And I don't know if, if the mayor and any of my colleague or Kelly have mentioned it, but next week is Mayor Cleanup Week. So if you have anything that you don't want any longer, you can set them out on the curb. But if you have thing that is useful, please consider donating them to Houses Into Home or Iowa Valley Habitat for Humanity. And then there's also goodwill to keep things off of the landfill. And that's all I have for tonight.
Awesome. Quick question about the vaccines that they might, are those the, the new boosters? Or are they the regular vaccines?
So that's what we're trying to find out. But right now, they just changed their, so like every, every year or so, they have a new coordinator. And so we just had a new coordinator, so communication is still not quite all there, so.
Yeah.
We don't know. So that's why I called the library, they probably have a better answer.
Fantastic, thank you. And finally, council member Knutson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Not sure I'll ever say this again, but it is so great to be here with you folks instead of in Florida, where I was scheduled to be tonight, landing maybe about a half an hour ago. And both my professional meetings were canceled, so it's good to be with you, and I don't have anything else.
Okay. Well, we're glad that you are here with us. Okay. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Moved by Quinn, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Jones. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Right, we are adjourned.